And there's really some relatively minor adjustments and stable levies proposed in the future for some of the other activities that we see, including the city's bond redemption levy. So although we are anticipating over a 3% annual increase in the general fund levy and 4% for the parks, we're still looking at an overall estimated future property tax annual increase somewhere in the 3%, give or take. And sometimes it's a little easier to see how that looks over time in a chart, so you'll just...
Yes?
This year's property tax levy adopted for 16 is 297.
The percentage.
As a percentage, the percentage increase was about 3.4%.
Okay.
And compared to the prior year was slightly less than...was less than 3%. It was closer to 2. And going forward...
2.7 or 2.8. I believe it's 2.4, then it was reduced to 2.2 by the city council.
Correct. So you'll see that the out-years, despite some larger projections in the early years, do kind of level off to be more reflective of what we anticipate inflation to be. But again, the longer we go out into the future on our projection, the less accurate it's going to be because situations change. So again, we'll be looking at this on an annual basis. It's kind of a rolling five-year projection. And again, just to show in a picture what the average, about a 3.5% annual growth based upon the numbers that were reflected before. When we're looking at the annual budget process and looking at any proposals that are of significant financial magnitude, we do, you as a council, do consider the major funding needs and the other competition, I guess, for the resources that are available. And again, we've...today, we're here talking about the neighborhood parks operating and capital needs. There's also been articulated needs related to paving and other related infrastructure. There's been needs articulated through the budget processes for facilities capital and maintenance, meaning the city's buildings. We've also talked about interest and concern about providing ongoing funding for affordable housing, public safety, as well as some other interests with the downtown comment. So getting back to the now stale information about the proposed referendum, I showed you a slide earlier that showed the average annual cost increase for the city's base budget or the city's base levy at 3.5%. That's the blue line you can see on the chart before you. Per the original resolution for the referendum to increase funding in the first year, 2018, I believe, there would be approximately a $14 million increase in the base property tax levy. Now, it's important to note that the original proposal talked about providing for funding that's .00388 of overall market value, but on an annual basis, we would need to calculate what the actual dollar amount of that is. So don't get too hung up on what the percentage is. We would be coming up with an annual dollar amount that would be levied against the property in the city. So we've got in 2018, in this chart, reflection of about a $15 million increase. And after that big increase in 2018, which would show as about an 8.7% increase, we would go back to largely an annual increase reflecting inflation. Because remember, once we increase the base, then anything on top of that is still just a percentage over the prior number. So we've been talking about what the impact of making this base adjustment is. You really only see it in the first year, but you're going to feel it for every year after that because of what a taxpayer ends up paying. Now, as for a little more...
We have...I'm sorry to interrupt. We have a question from council member Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is actually based off of what you just said in terms of people being able to feel it. Obviously, our tax base has grown. Do you have the last two years in terms of how fast our tax base has grown? And for the average homeowner, my understanding is that for the majority of homeowners, the amount being paid has actually decreased. And so do we have projections of how rapidly the tax base might increase based off of current work with permits out there, all of that, and how ultimately this might be offset and what it ultimately might feel like to taxpayers?
Vice President Glidden, Councilmember Johnson, we have not done that degree of analysis regarding the overall impact to a particular piece of property. Largely, the idea is that if the individual property's value increases at less than what the increase in levy and tax capacity is, that they'll get a reduction. That's way more detail than we probably want to get into today, and I have not completed that analysis, and that can certainly be part of a future discussion. But your question is very timely and interesting because included in this chart is another line, the orange line, that is based upon the referendum that would calculate a dollar amount based upon total market value. This is an estimate assuming that the total market value of the city increases at 5% on an annual basis. So starting off in 2018, per the proposal, the referendum would bring in about $15 million. And if the values continued to grow at a rate of 5% per year through the duration of the proposal, they would be receiving about $36 million a year by the end of the proposal. So that just gives some context as to comparing to what the new resolution brought forward today is. You've got a potentially growing commitment versus what may be a little more stable commitment.
Thank you.
Add one more question on this point, I believe, from council member Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, to be very clear, in order to maintain our current city services and support this commitment, we would be increasing the levy by 8.7% in December of this year. Is that what this graph is showing?
Council Vice President Glidden, Councilmember Bender, that would largely...it would be a less number because, again, this proposal was for $15 million versus the, as I understand, the proposed resolution is somewhere around 8 or some...an increase of a lesser magnitude. And so the percentage increase would be a number less than that.
Okay. Is there a more incremental way to raise this kinds of funds instead of seeing one large increase in one year?
Vice President Glidden, Councilmember Bender, there's always the option to phase in any plan. We will typically will do that when we know of an out-year obligation to identify, which is part of the reason why we tend to do this longer-term financial planning so that we can identify where we have the peaks and valleys and make adjustments along the way so that we can mitigate a lot of these peaks and valleys in terms of how it feels to the property taxpayer.
We have a couple more questions or comments. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to be clear, this is the proposal if a referendum went through.
Correct.
But the proposal that Council President Johnson and I have brought through has talked about a 1% increase and the remainder being paid out of existing cash balances, excess debt payments that don't need to go in the full amount we've been collecting to those sources.
Correct.
So this is kind of the, if the referendum went through. And I also want to note, this is just the city parks combined portion, which is about, what, 40% of the tax bill?
Mm-hmm.
And so you still have the county that routinely is raising now in the 3%, 4% range. The school district, the school referendum, and that's if everyone's property value stays where it is. But you're estimating the property values for assessment purposes are increasing at 5% per year. But we know in some wards for some types of property, those increases, like in the North Loop, for example, are at 50%. Or in Council President Johnson's ward on the north side, in excess of 15% to 20%. So everybody will feel it differently. But almost 9% is still almost 9%.
Correct.
Okay. And I just want to kind of respond to Councilmember Goodman's description with saying this is exactly where I think we want to go from here to a more fulsome presentation at the Ways and Means Committee to understand what is the proposal, what are the funds being identified, and are those ongoing funding sources or one-time? And then how do those items work together? So I think you're hearing a lot of folks who are very interested in how can we make this work together, but you need to just get that full financial package to understand that. So...and if the parks office could help me kind of check off the speakers up to Councilmember Goodman, and then Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you. So I just want to be clear that this graph and this plan wouldn't include borrowing for all the capital improvements and paying down debt. And would that be another option for how we could then spread this out a little differently?
So it seems like that is a question that is in part...I just want to make sure I'm understanding, is your question, did you wish to ask a question of Council President Johnson and Councilmember Goodman? And then another question about kind of what's possible?
No, I want to...
Because I think Ms. Christensen is not presenting us with her perspective on what is the proposal that...I just want to make sure we're clear with who's the recipient of the question.
So it was for finance?
Okay.
So I just want to be clear about the graph. It was to be saying if we were going to be doing capital improvements, and this is at that, I guess, that 14 million or whatever level. So we know if it wasn't 14, it would be less if, let's say, we didn't have these other revenue streams, which is a whole other issue because I don't know what else we could do with those revenue streams if they are there. So I appreciate that. But let's say we...I just wanted to be clear that this one way that might drive down this could be that we would borrow it. We would borrow money for the capital improvements, and then we'd just be paying for the debt. Might actually stretch it out a little further.
Vice President Glidden, Councilmember Gordon, again, the information provided in this presentation is based solely upon the referendum proposal, which as a levy referendum would not provide for bonding. It would be annual cash collection through the annual property tax levy. So that's what's reflected on this chart. There are opportunities likely with future discussion and when we've had more time to vet out the proposals, we can certainly bond, and then we incur interest payments, and we're locked in for a longer period of time. So there are definitely some cost-benefit analyses that would need to be completed where their interest in looking at doing an alternative mechanism for funding the capital needs. But again, I don't...anything would be speculation on my part as to how it would be impactful.
I appreciate that.
Go ahead.
If you don't mind, Councilmember Gordon, just an additional piece because if we have a referendum, and we know we have this ongoing revenue stream, there are options such as bonding future revenues. The challenge from a park perspective that I think is important for the council to understand is we have an annual gap that we need to fund. And we could bond all this money upfront and do all the projects at once or do them in a short period of time. But at the end of 20 years, we're going to be in the same place we are today. The issue is we need to get on a regular rehab and capital investment schedule that is...takes proportionality of all of our assets and spends that money annually. Otherwise, those assets, if we do them all at once, will be in the same place we are today.
I understand, and I wasn't meaning to say we could do them all at once. I'm just worried that if we commit to the 10 million extra or whatever it is, we're going to have to get the money from somewhere. And if it's taking from what might be current service levels and current things that we want to do because we're using some other revenue, we may have to end up raising more taxes anyway to cover those. So I was just curious about that.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Maybe I'm missing...I still have not heard the funding sources that have been identified to cover the resolution, so maybe I missed that. So I wanted to ask that question. What are the specific funding sources that have been identified? And then I also wanted to ask that, as you mentioned, a staff direction that would be coming for Ways and Means. I think it would be helpful to understand from finance as well the status of any unspent fund balances or other potential sources of funding that I'm hearing council members talk about. I thought we spent the balances that we had last year, but I could be wrong, and I think it'd be very helpful to understand for that overall context of any unspent funding that we think is available for 20 years at about $13.5 million a year.
So I'm hearing here some questions that may be for the authors again on what are the proposed sources so we can start to understand that, and then some more general questions that were for finance. So... Council President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In looking at potential funding sources for the capital needs, the capital needs obviously, that's the $8 million. I have looked at...we have existing obligations for our pensions, which we have overprogrammed for in our five-year budget based on current law. Now, that may change. The pension issues are very, very volatile, and we all know, reading the papers, longevity tables are being changed and challenged, and, you know, we will have a reckoning for our pension obligations. But based on our current budgeting, we have budgeted, I think, $7.9 million more than what our current obligation is for the monies that we send to the state for our police fire and murder obligations. The other potential source of funding for the extra capital dollars would be potentially, again, in 2017, based on current legislation, the legislature is going to take 40% of the debt that we are currently paying on our library bonds. We passed a general obligation library referendum, how many years ago? I can't even remember, that we have been, as part of our obligation with our agreement with the county, we continue to pay the debt service on that general obligation debt for the downtown library and the community libraries. In 2017, the state of Minnesota is going to pick up 40% of that debt service based on current legislation. So I would put those two things out there as a potential. We also are having a proposal that will come...or, excuse me, a response to a staff direction at our budget last fall about the revenues associated with tax increment districts that are being decertified in the next few years. That report will come to us, full information to all the council as to what those revenues will be, and then we'll make decisions about where those revenues go. We also have some flexibility in our, in my opinion, in our ongoing budgeting for debt service. We have currently about a $49 million backlog of projects that we have established debt service to cover. Now, what's happened is, and Park Board's part of it, we're part of it, you know? Projects don't always get done exactly on time, but we have budgeted to cover those expenses. We have not issued those bonds because you don't issue bonds until you need to. So there is the ability to flex those dollars within our budget. So I think between potentially some from here, some from there, that we can come up with a viable financing plan for these capital needs for the Park Board. That's my opinion.
Okay. Councilmember Bender? Okay. All right. Do you want to just continue?
Sure.
That is it?
Thank you. So we've had a couple of comments and questions regarding how the individual taxpayer may be impacted. And again, as Councilmember Goodman articulated, it's really pretty complex. It's hard to come up with an example that would say, well, this is what you're going to receive. This is how you're going to feel it because every single piece of property is going to be a little bit different. It will depend on their...the change in their valuation, the property classification, if it's a homestead residential property, if it's commercial property, and then, of course, the overall change in the tax capacity or the value of the properties within the city. So it's a little bit of imperfect science, so to speak. But just a quick overview, the city levy is an actual dollar amount. We don't set a tax. We don't set a specific tax rate. We don't collect more money when the values in the city go up. We pick a number. That's what we adopt. And then the...that number that we adopt is then spread over each property's proportional capacity to pay or largely associated with their value as a piece of the overall property valuation pie. Wish I had a pie chart. That would be helpful. So largely, you'll see in the chart before you that we've got major property classifications, commercial, industrial, residential, apartment, and other. And you'll see that residential properties comprise about 63% of the overall market value of all the property in the city. But because of the property tax system that allows for some credits to be applied or exclusion of value, you see that even though the residential properties are 62% of the overall value, they're only going to be paying about 49% of the overall property taxes. So you see, it's a little bit complicated. And again, any change that's made in the individual property's value is going to impact how they're impacted. So...
I'm going to just pause here because, Councilmember Goodman, did you want to ask a question? I have a count. Okay. Okay. It was handled. Thank you.
So in summary, so we have an adopted levy of about $297.6 million for 2016. Now, my information is just slightly different than Superintendent Miller, and I will explain those differences. But largely, we've concluded that the impact is about the same dollar amount on an individual piece of property. So we've got a median valued home for P-16, which means it's the value as of 2015 of approximately $200,000. The city taxes, remember, everybody pays taxes to multiple jurisdictions. So the line item on the property tax statement associated for city taxes is about $1,129. For each percentage change in the property tax levy, and Councilmember Bender, I think this gets to your initial question, albeit the long way around to get there, that each additional change, each additional percentage increase in the property tax levy equates to about $3 million. And with the proposal as part of the referendum, again, prepared in response to that initial proposal, would be an approximately 5% levy increase. That was shown on that line chart that you saw earlier. And the additional city taxes with the approval of the referendum would be somewhere in the $60 range. So that's consistent with what the parks have proposed. So again, if you consider that every $3 million of increased need for levy is going to be the 1%, and that, let's see, for the median valued home, you're looking at probably $12 for each additional percentage increase.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Christensen. I will say that there have been a lot of references in this presentation as a whole to referendum. And so again, we had had our city attorney prepare a presentation with city attorney...you want to come up? Questions on referendum and charter change proposals. And just because there have been so many references to that, and this proposal is very fresh, I think that we should have that presentation again. I think it's short, just so that we have that, and then we can see if there are any remaining questions. And I think we're about to the end. I just want to say, I know that people have been dribbling out, and I know it's not because they're not interested, but this has gone on for a long time. So I just want to say again, thank you to everyone who took their time to be here, and of course, all the people connected with the Park Board officially as staff and commissioners. Thank you. So, Ms. Hamel.
Thank you, Chair Glidden, members of the committee. I'm going to quickly go through the Park Board's initiative and our initial legal analysis of that. So the Park Board's closing the gap initiative is what is calling for this dedicated funding to address their identified financial gap. And they've identified that for necessary maintenance, rehabilitation, and capital improvements. And in their proposal, they identified four avenues by which they believe they could pursue in order to close this gap and find the necessary funding that they need. One is through a charter amendment, and they've brought a proposal to the Charter Commission, and I'll address that later. They also have presented to this city council a resolution for a referendum. The third method would be a citizen petition for a referendum, and the fourth method would be to go to state legislature. I'm just going to talk about the two, the Charter Commission and the city council today. So on the request to city council, they wanted a special levy by voter referendum. And this resolution would...that they brought forward was to approve proposed ballot language for the November 2016 referendum on the November ballot. So it would request the city council to place the referendum on this fall's election ballot, which would impose a special levy of .388 of estimated market value of all property in the city to fund the capital improvements and to supplement their operating budget in and for neighborhood parks. This is that $15 million that Ms. Christensen was talking about. The resolution also called for this levy to be in addition to their normal funding, and the Park Board would seek agreement with the city then. They were directed to seek agreement with the city in order to protect the funding streams that they had and hold them harmless from reductions. Now, that particular resolution came before the city council, and it was vetoed by the mayor, and then the Park Board overrode that veto on the 3rd of February. So when you have a special levy by voter referendum, you have to have legal grounds in order to place the ballot question out there. And there's either specific charter authority that must be had or statutory authority. And these two methods have been examined by Attorney General Opinions, case law, and Minnesota statute. Now, our city charter has no provision for levy referendum. Okay? So because that option isn't there, we then need to look at statutory authority. And the statutory authority cited by the Park Board for the city to place this levy referendum on the ballot is Minnesota statute, section 275.73. Our analysis of this section and the other statutes surrounding it indicate that this is part of the 1997 law related to the state imposed levy limits. The levy limits are what the state imposed and said, you can't raise your levies more than this. But there's this release valve, and that release valve is 275.73, which would allow in certain situations for there to be a tax levy brought to the voters. And in our legal analysis, 275.73 is only permissible when the state has imposed the tax limit. Okay? So even when it is applicable, which in our opinion it isn't, any levy that was passed would still be subject to other law, other charter provisions on the amount of taxes that a local government could levy. Now, I do note that the trust for public land, you know, they issued their report that the Park Board has provided and cited, that initially in their report...I have the page here. I did have the page here. Oh, I do. On page 11, they initially indicated in that report that they issued in September that the Park Board may not refer a taxing question to the ballot. That was their initial stance. Apparently, now they've issued a recent letter changing that opinion. So initially, the trust for public land agreed with the analysis of the city attorney's office on that issue. This also isn't a special levy under Minnesota statutes 275.70 subdivision 5.5, and that's when you have a referendum based on market value. And any levy that would be allowed would be required to be approved and ordered by city council. And, you know, we don't have those tax limits in place. But the actual resolution is presented to council. If it were to be had under 275.73, the language is incorrect in that it refers to estimated market value, and it needs to be levied against net tax capacity. And then again, 275.01 requires that a specific amount be stated in a ballot question for a levy. So those are some of our issues that we found with the proposal that came. So those are some of our issues that we found with the proposal that came to the city. Now, simultaneously, or very close in time, the Park Board also made a request to the Charter Commission. And in that request, they were requesting authorization to present to the voters on the November 2016 ballot, a proposed amendment to the Charter, chapter 6.5. That's different than what was presented to council for a referendum. In this case, they're actually seeking a change to the charter that would includes their desired, the same, they want the same amendment that would have been presented to the taxpayers for a referendum, for a levy, to be included now as part of the charter. So it would be a proposed charter change that the citizens would be voting on. And again, this proposed levy that would now be in our charter would be in addition to normal funding. And then they still would have to continue to seek that agreement with the city to protect their funding from other reductions. Now, the Charter Commission has scheduled some public hearings on these matters. I've listed them here on the screen. And we are currently reviewing the question of whether or not the Park Board proposal is a proper subject matter for our charter. Because our charter is to, for the organization of the city and its departments, and this is a funding source. So we are currently looking at that issue.
And I want to make sure, and I apologize for not, I should have written it down when I first had a thought. I apologize for not acknowledging, Barry Clegg is with us, he's chairing our Charter Commission. And so I want to thank you for being here. I know that the Charter Commission heard a presentation recently from the Park Board and then went forward with their business of setting public hearings. Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Ms. Trammell, with regards to this NPRB charter proposal, let's say if the resolution that was talked about a little bit earlier goes through the council and goes through the Park Board, does this make this issue with the Charter Commission moot? And, or will they? Let me just ask the moot part.
I think that's a question maybe for the Park Board themselves because they're the ones who have asked for the action to be considered.
Yeah. Councilmember Yang, the intent is that if the resolution that's before you and our Park Board goes through and ordinances are drafted and approved by both bodies, we will cease moving forward with a referendum or a charter amendment.
Okay, well, you know, when I look at some of those dates that are set there, it, those dates may come before, let's say, the votes of the council or the NPRB. You know, what, what can be done in that situation to maybe push that back?
Again, Councilmember Yang, I would say that the reason those dates are in there is we have a, we have a timed certain deadline by which, in order to get anything on the ballot, we have a timed certain deadline. And if we go through a charter amendment or go through a referendum, there's a lot of work that has to be done in order to meet that time deadline. And our hope is that we can come to a resolution on the resolution that's before both bodies and come to an agreement so that we can stop that work. But our conversations with Council President Johnson and Councilmember Goodman have been, we can't stop proceeding with either a charter amendment or referendum while if this resolution gets resolved or not, because we have a lot of work to do in order to put a referendum or a charter amendment on the election, on the November ballot. So in our mind, the sooner we can resolve the resolution before you, and that's going to our board tonight, the sooner we can stop all those other efforts.
Thank you. I had one more question from Ms. Trammell, I believe, which is, just can you refresh us on what was the authority for the library system? I thought that was voter approved something. So can you just remind me what that was about? Because I'm sure the public is thinking about that too, and I want to make sure I'm understanding what happened with that or what was the authority for, for that. This is how they funded their downtown library.
Chair Glynn.
And we can, we can ask for that report back if you're not, if you don't know right now.
Why, I'd like to clarify first, are you talking about what that, which happened in the 1950s?
No.
For funding? Okay. Then I don't have an answer for you, but I could get back to you.
Okay. So I think we might just at some other point ask for an update on that, just because I'm sure, well, anyway, I'll just say I'll ask for that, and that might be appropriate in a couple of different places, including our IGR committee, which often handles some questions about those type of issues and our governmental issues. All right. I actually had a couple of questions that I wanted to ask in relative terms, maybe, I don't know how important these are, but I think that these are for Superintendent Miller, and maybe also in part for the authors here. So we, yes. Okay. I'm asking right now, and you can decide if Council President Johnson can handle it. I'm sure that she can. All right. So here we go. My two questions are, I'm not understanding what is the implication of the timeline for a proposal to the city council of when we would act? And so I think there was an anticipation that we would act on April 15th, which is our full council meeting. And so I would like to hear what, why is that the timeline? My second question, just so I can look out and you all can decide what you want to do. My second question is, in relative terms, it's really a small question, but what is the need for this $1.5 million in quote startup funds that you are asking for mid-year in this year? And that's just, again, it's another challenge that has to do with our normal budget processes, and I know that you have some unspent money as we do on capital projects, and I just didn't understand the purpose of that. So we might ask the other question first.
Yes.
If you want the authors to be part of answering, and you may want to answer. Do the authors want to answer anything on that?
Madam Chair, my thought, and Ms. Miller can correct me, but the Park Board, in order to rev up, to be able to expend capital dollars, is going to need more planning staff, they're going to need more staff to help them get the community engagement process in place, that sort of thing. And so this is out of our contingency fund. If memory serves me, at the end of third quarter last year, we had $4 million in our contingency fund, which is mostly used to fund snow emergencies. We had one snow emergency after that third quarter in December, which in, again, my math leaves us $3 million in our contingency fund, that we would split that in half with the Park Board and allow them to staff up so that they have the capacity to get going on these projects.
Councilmember Glynn, just to add, yes, it is all what council President Johnson said, in addition to doing the work we need to do, lay out the projects and get rehab projects out to bid. Also, we'd have to buy additional equipment for maintenance. We have to buy, hire more maintenance staff to do the maintenance side of it as well. So it's all of those pieces so that we're ready to go January 1st.
And what was the purpose of the timeline?
That, I'm going to rely on Council President Gordon, Johnson.
Is there some, is there some timing thing that is driving that timeline? I just want to make sure I'm understanding our flexibility and being able to do our work and, and I noticed there was a pretty quick timeline, so I just want to make sure I'm understanding what your thought process was on that.
Madam Chair, I want to move forward as quickly as this, on this as possible, because in the meantime, as Councilmember Yang pointed out, the Park Board is going down this road of trying to get a measure on the ballot. And this, one of the advantages of this particular choice is that they would receive dollars in 2017. If they go to the ballot, they're not going to get money until 2018. So it gives them an extra year, an advanced extra year. And I think we can eliminate some of this process if we move forward quickly with an agreement with the Park Board and eliminate some of this, these timeframes that are driven by the time it takes to get a measure on the ballot.
Okay. All right. That is helpful. So with that, I think I'm going to move to receive and file the various reports that have been presented to the city council. So I'll just go ahead and move to receive and file, so we can get that done. All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
And the second thing I would like to do-